And we are recording.
Okay, everybody ready? Let's get started. All right, welcome, everybody. This is the Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, August 18th, 2025. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, I would like to call this meeting to order. Please be reminded if you come forward to please provide your name and address into the microphone for the public record. This meeting is being recorded and we are live on Facebook this evening. With that all being said, I would look for a motion to approve the evening's agenda.
Motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Trustee Romus has offered a motion to approve the evening's agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Neto. Any further questions or discussion on the evening's agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. That motion carries seven to zero. At this time, let's stand and say the Fledge of Allegiance.
The Fledge of Allegiance, due to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Okay, we are off to item number five this evening. Item number five A is the introduction of our new directed enforcement officer, Eric Miller, Administrator Kaker.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to introduce Deputy Miller to the Village Board. Maybe you'll leave your hand there. And to the community. He has been with the Sheriff's Office since 2013, with the last two and a half years on patrol in Swamaco. He is a Swamaco resident and a member of the Sheriff's Office SWAT team. He will be focusing his efforts on community traffic safety and enforcement. So if we ever get any concerns about traffic or speeding, he's going to be our go-to contact with the Sheriff's Office. So, welcome. Happy to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. That's all I got for you.
Welcome.
Speech?
He's going to be an anchor to the community, you can tell. All right, item five B this evening is the Brown County Planning Department Comprehensive Plan Process. Administrator Kaker?
Thank you. I'll invite Dan Teeters and Devin Yoder from the Brown County Planning Commission. So after the July Village Board meeting, I thought there'd be some value in having the staff from Brown County Planning come and give a presentation about their process for developing a comprehensive plan. And they'll go over it, as well as we'll open this up for a Q and A from the Village Board, just so we can all get comfortable on what that process is going to look like. So with that, I'll hand it over to you. I do have the proposal on our side up here, if you need to reference it at all.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Board members, thank you for having us. My name is Dan Teeters. I'm the Planning Director and NPO Director with Brown County Planning. I'm happy to be back. It took a little bit of a hiatus from the county planning office, but happy to be back and happy again to be working with Village of Swamaco. I know in the past, when I spent 11 years at the county, there were a handful of projects that the county was happy to work with the village on, from comprehensive plan updates to park and rec plan updates, to developing the bike and ped plan. So the county is active and more than willing to work with the village on projects such as this. What I'd like to do tonight is just give Devin an opportunity to give a very, very brief overview again, because I know you guys have read through the proposal of our planning process and the development of the comprehensive plan. And I believe in this case, we're doing an update, the required tenure update. So I will hand it over to Devin, and I will be happy to answer questions or concerns that you guys may have at any time, as well with Devin.
All right, thank you. Yeah. So you had the, have the proposal, and hopefully you've had a chance to look at it. Really, a lot of, I mean, there's important things all throughout the process, but a lot of the important work, you know, we'll try and establish upfront. Part of that is improving a citizen participation plan, and that's, again, with input from you all, just on, you know, kind of what, how you're looking to formalize getting input from residents. So that's one of the first things. We can also, you know, once the calendar flips over, start working on just general background data. That's, you know, things from like the census and that sort of thing, demographic information. But the important pieces upfront will be first looking at the existing plan and with input from the, well, what will end up being the advisory committee, however that body is finalized. Between that and village staff and you all, looking at, you know, what things, you know, you really want to focus on in the update, what things in the existing plan definitely need changes. Maybe there are things that, you know, kind of look good as they are. So establishing that upfront, and then that'll kind of help focus, help us focus on the actual update part. The other part of kind of where that focus will come from is then getting public input, and that we'll also look to do early. And part of that will be having a public visioning session, if that's what you choose to all do, and inviting the public kind of to a, I wouldn't say an open house meeting, but kind of an open meeting where residents can generate ideas, either things, you know, they want to see, things they like, things they don't like. And then through that, you know, we'll prioritize things that are identified there. But again, those are all things that kind of help us focus on the actual work of the updating of the plan. And then really, from there, we'll be working through the actual updates, again, with background information and kind of what, what you all want to focus on, and then taking that kind of in chunks through the remainder of the year. And again, that's, the more the specifics are outlined in the proposal, but that's kind of the, the big picture overview of, of the process. So I guess if you have questions or more details you're looking for, we'd be happy to take those.
I've got just a quick question for you. Well, it might not be as quick as I'd like. So I just to outline very broadly at a, at a high level, the process that, that we're thinking towards right now. And what I'd like is, is your input, is this, is this consistent with the process that you're seeing from other villages, municipalities in Brown County? So what we're really looking to do is we, we have the old comprehensive plan. We've had a lot of discussions on this internally. We have a group of citizens who volunteered their time to participate directly with, as, as a subset of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So there is a comprehensive plan committee which consists of these citizens, consists of the Planning and Zoning, current Planning and Zoning Commission. Our thought process is to go through the current comprehensive plan. If I misstate any of this, anybody, correct me. Our plan is to move forward with this by having our individual departments within the village start to look at the comprehensive plan and get their vision, what does this look like, forward. And then having them present that to the Citizens Committee, and also have them present that to the Planning and Zoning Commission for discussion and, and for suggested direction to the Village Board after discussion with, with Brown County. All of those meetings are public meetings, so they're open to citizen input at any time. And, and hopefully, hopefully they'll, you know, we'll get some additional citizens who come in. But that's kind of our rough plan in terms of going forward. Is that consistent, or does that vary from what you're seeing from other municipalities and?
No, I would say that's, that's along the lines of what we've done for other updates. Again, you know, it's really upfront, trying to identify either what you want to see revised, updated, or left alone. And, you know, again, kind of the, where that all comes from may vary a little bit depending on the community and the level of interest. But that is, yeah, the general process that we'll use. And, and again, you know, it's, it's important to do that because ultimately, you know, this is the Village of Swamaco's plan, not Brown County's plan. So we're looking for that and, you know, want that input because that will help, help us in creating something that's what the village wants.
Okay.
And there, well, the five residents that came forward are also going to have a vote, like your planning commission.
Within the comprehensive?
Within these meetings. Yeah. I mean, others can participate, but these five members will also have a vote.
Right. So in that planning, in that comprehensive planning commission, which is made up of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the citizen representatives, there can be other individuals who come and provide input. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, anyone else should take that input. And then, you know, the vote on the recommendation goes, is, is made by that commission. So there is no additional standing of planning and zoning. There's no additional standing if you're a trustee within the commission. You're all part of the commission, and you all have one vote that you cast in terms of a recommendation to the Village Board. Is that what you were thinking? Or did I miss something?
I believe so. Yeah, I mean, you meet for the meetings, and those five citizens will have the vote that the planning commission also has.
Right.
Yeah.
And we expect a robust conversation in that, perhaps some back and forth with, you know, recommendations that may come from a specific department within the village. And there may be, after discussion on the, the commission, it may be referred back to that, that group as well. But we're getting too much into the weeds. It's really about the process.
So a question on the process. So as this committee works, right, they may be presented with something from X, Y, Z committee. The Citizen Committee may have a question that would then tap into your resources, like the census data or whatever. Does it work best for the committee, in your opinion, and from your side of it too, for those questions to come out? You address the questions, feed it back to the committee, and it just kind of rolls that way as they continue to process through? Or is it better system from your perspective and from what you've seen, for the committee to pile up the questions and hand them to in one pile, like from all the different groups? If that was clear.
Yeah. Well, no, yeah. I think it might end up being the combination of both, because again, if there's some front-end things, and if you end up convening the committee and starting to do some work even before we start, you know, I think some of that could be done then. But then really going forward, once we're working on this, all the, the updates and, you know, kind of each step of the process, we would be working directly with the committee.
That makes a lot of sense.
And, and we'd be meeting with the committee. And really, that's kind of that first, first sounding board for what we're working with.
So what I heard there was that if the committee has a question or an issue that you can provide a response to or data to, that's just like a, just here's your answer, that works well. But then at the end, when it's really time to make things work, that's when you're going to bring in and sit down at the table and take big bites out of things.
Yeah. Yeah. And we do that throughout the whole process. So it wouldn't just be kind of beginning and end. That'd be, we'd be working with the committee, I'd say almost the most, you know, aside from maybe village staff and village departments. But yeah, that's kind of where we're really looking to get the, a lot of the input, or it kind of help refining the plan from that group.
Very good.
It's a very iterative process.
That's a great term. That's a good term for it. Okay.
Devin, could you talk a little bit about the online survey, the map, and then the visioning session, and what we can expect, the types of questions, and how those questions are created, and then what that looks like in a final product?
Yeah. So some of that, you know, can really be determined, you know, as we're working through it. The visioning session, you know, is a little, we follow nominal, it's called nominal group process, where again, we give just kind of a list of things for people to think about. And I guess when we get to the visioning session, people break into groups. They'll use these prompts, some questions and ideas to kind of think about what they want to see. They'll generate ideas, and then we'll, within each group, take all the ideas and then look through them. And then after generating that, we'll create a survey for everyone who attended the meeting, and then just to kind of rank all the ideas that were generated from that. And again, not saying that something's more important than something else, but where to, how, a way to prioritize and, and then help keep the focus on kind of the top things. Those results and everything that's compiled from that would be included in the plan. As far as an online survey and/or mapping exercise, you know, we don't really necessarily have a standard thing for this. Part of that can really be, again, shaped by what sort of input the village might be looking for. You know, again, if there's like, kind of content-specific things that you want to get either new feedback on or additional feedback on, we could tailor it to that. And then the same with the mapping. It's kind of a GIS-based thing, but you know, if it's something where people identify things they want to see, or places, or, I don't know, highlight different locations, we can use that, and that's another tool.
Yeah, I think that is, is a great opportunity to enable more citizens to be able to engage in the process. They don't necessarily have to participate just at the visioning session event. The, the ability, the technology improved to the point where we were able to make that, that information gathering process much more accessible. So through that online GIS mapping and through online surveys, we're able to gather even more information, which should help direct and point where your citizens want and expect the community to go in the future. So it's just another tool that we're better at.
And when you, when would you envision the visiting committee, or the visiting thing happening? Is that something that happens in the fall, in the spring? Just throwing a dart, I realize you don't know for sure.
Yeah. Well, so that, that would be early. And, you know, again, if we're starting, say in January, you know, we'd want to try and do that, you know, either January or February.
Early winter.
Yeah, early winter, try and get that done. Again, with the survey, that sort of thing could also be at that time. But, you know, there's some flexibility there. But for sure, the, the visioning session, we'd want to do early on.
Because that, that part is sort of important to me, that the Citizen Committee has something to say about what might be in that survey. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, yeah. So we, we started this discussion around just these, these departmental meetings that are going out and inviting department heads, as well as outside individuals. And it feels like that input happens in section four and five. Am I not mistaken? Because we, we kind of build up to building kind of an understanding, looking, looking back at what we've done. But when it comes to what are the goals and objectives, are we to give those to you in sections four and five relative to what, this is what we think we would like it to look like, and this is what our vision is, so that you can bring that into the process? Or are you going to be sitting through all these meetings that we're having with the departments to help them come up with the goals and objectives?
Well, you want to take it?
Well, yeah, I was going to, so some of, I think, you know, in some ways, the, kind of the high-level stuff can be established early. If there's, you know, again, more specific, I'm thinking especially more like objectives, you know, where that's a little more detail-oriented. That, you know, if we, that could be something that we could do as, in a committee, the committee meeting. You know, I think we could also, you know, it kind of depends, once we get going, I guess how it all shakes out. But I, I think there's ways that we can be involved with that and hear that feedback.
I would say, think of it from the standpoint that you have an existing comprehensive plan. Staff is the one that has their hands and their fingers in it on more of a day-to-day basis. They know the ins and outs. They know the, the current goals and objectives. And they know what kinds of issues and opportunities are being presented on a daily basis that may not be covered within the plan currently. So that's a great opportunity for staff to be able to say, hey, this is what's missing, or this is what works.
Right.
Keep those things. We need to change these things. So they get that, kind of that first initial take on where the current status of the plan is. That's great information to gather.
Yep.
And the public does not necessarily go through the comprehensive plan on a daily basis, right? So they're going to give you more of those big vision ideas and goals and objectives. So that's where that public input process is very valuable. So you've got very detail-oriented things that are going to probably come from the staff level and the big, high-level, big-picture things that are coming from the public. Then it's our job to take and start to blend those and massage that into one plan.
Our goal is to open to the public those departmental discussions. That's what we just talked about. And so, you know, my concern is this big funnel, right, coming through. We need some of your help to prepare ourselves for a lot of information coming and allowing the citizens and the experts that we've, are bringing in to, to participate. So help us just understand in this process, when all that's due. And it feels like in section four and five, is when all that comes to you and says, this is, we've, we've vetted a lot of stuff.
Well, you have to understand, we're going to be doing this chapter by chapter. We're not going to come in and just do the whole plan and be scatterbrained through this whole process. So when our commissions, commissions and committees are reviewing for changes, they'd like to see in it, whether it's updating maps, updating trail plan language or whatnot, that's what we're going to present to this committee. We don't have the budget for Brown County to sit down on every one of our committee and commission meetings. It's not what was planned. They're planning on eight to 12 meetings in our current budget, unless you want to triple that budget and have them attend all these other committees and commissions. That's why we're starting this process now. So our committees have this stuff reviewed. So when the chapters come up for the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee, we have the best data we can give them for their review and analysis.
So it's what you just said, the target date in my mind, is what he just described, has to be ready by the end of May. Because that's what this, I'm looking at your map here. So we've got to go through these departmental meetings and get the input, so that when you come in and ask us for one of the seven meetings in late May, sometime in May, in June, that's, we'd have it ready for you. That's what I'm assuming.
Yeah. And again, you know, this is to kind of keep things on track. But, you know, if, there, there's a little wiggle room, I think, here and there. So it's not...
It's iterative, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. It, it's flexible. So this, the Gantt chart that you have in front of you is not set by any, there have been plenty of projects worked on as an office, as a department. We've, we've got to adjust just based on how things are rolling. So it's not uncommon for these to adjust a month here or there.
Yeah, but you're right. I mean, that section is kind of really getting down to, to what you want to see and, you know, working towards, again, then section six, the implementation part.
Right.
Those things really are kind of what will drive that.
I mean, we'll also be guided by the project budget as well, because we, we certainly, you know, hopefully, we can minimize that to some degree and obviously not exceed that budget. I mean, it already calls for seven meetings of two hours each. So...
And when it comes to budget, we will, we will certainly stay within the project.
Be careful what you, be careful what you commit to. Project creep is always out of its way.
We're, we're experts in, in not allowing project creep.
Okay. All right, very good. Good to, good to hear. All right, anyone else with questions for the fine gentleman from Brown County? No? Anyone?
No.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you. Thank you very much. We look forward to working with you. All right. Keep those notes, folks. We're going to need them. All right, let's go on then. So, second presentation, that was the second presentation that was five B. We are now moving on to item six. Item six this evening is reserved for public appearances. This is for anyone in the audience who is here and has an item on their mind that they would like to speak to. This is your opportunity to come forward, provide your name and address, and let us know what's on your mind. Be aware that if you are here for an item on the agenda, we will do everything possible to give you an opportunity to speak to it. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to an item not on this evening's agenda? Anyone? All right, seeing no one, we will continue forward. This evening, item number seven is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of previous minutes of the Village Board dated August 4th, 2025. Item B, June 2025 Animal Control Report. Item C, July 2025 Municipal Court Report. Item D, July 2025 Rec Report. And item E, the July 2025 Treasurer's Report. That is what we have on the consent agenda. Discussion on the consent agenda.
Two very nitpicky things in the minutes. Consent agenda minutes, item C, St. Benedict's Parish. Parish has two Rs. If you could drop an R.
Parish has two Rs, all right.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
And Fire Department, 10A, water basket, should it be water rescue basket? Or, I don't know.
Water rescue?
Yeah, water rescue basket.
Is, is that clearer?
Yep.
Someone could make a mistake with a, if it's a water basket for the fire department, a basket to haul water versus water rescue basket. It's a good catch.
Otherwise, motion to approve unless somebody has something else.
We have a motion. I have just a couple of quick comments. There is a motion made by trustee Eckert to approve the evening's consent agenda, and a second by trustee Romas. Just a couple of quick comments. I, I like to go through the certain aspects of the village documentation that's presented to us, the, the park and rec. Probably at this point, no one should be surprised by this. I look at this carefully, because the park and rec programs that we offer within the village is a service that we offer to every citizen in the village and citizens outside of the village. So when folks are coming from other communities to participate in a program, they're, they're coming to participate in the program, but they're also visiting Swamaco. They're seeing Vicry Village. They're seeing our parks. They're seeing our, our, our other things that we have here. So when I look at park and rec, and I think about this idea, and we've, I've talked about it before, the importance of value add. What is the, what is the true value that we, as the Village of Swamaco, have that no other community has? You know, as Schwabin has, you know, their Packer Central District, right? We have the outdoors. We have park and rec. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. So when you think about the number of people who come to this village to utilize these programs, there's a great picture in here of the Calavera Park Summer Splash Bash. I couldn't even begin to estimate how many people there are at that. A tremendous number. That's a free event that people are coming to utilize. And it would be interesting someday to take a poll and find out where all those people are from. Because I bet you there's friends of friends of friends who are from all different communities who are, who are coming here. The, the, the stain glass program, holy smokes. Did you see how many people are partaking of the stain glass? I don't know of any other community that has a stain glass program, let alone brings in 89 individuals? Did I get that number right? Did I read that right? And then lastly, you know, and talk about private, this was always a passion of mine, you know, public-private partnerships, yoga in the park, 12 to 25 people, and co-sponsored by Anapie Brewing Company. I mean, how wonderful is that? So these are all things that, there are other communities, you know, around us, sure, they do things, and sure, they have their particular elements that they're really super good at. But this is really what we're good at at Swamaco. This is really, you know, the value add, what we offer people that they can't get anywhere else. And I think that that's something, I think that's something important. And I think that as we go into the comprehensive plan, we really have to put some attention onto that. So with that being said, if anybody else, no one else has any additional comments on that, I can accept the motion in a second.
We've got a motion by Eckert and second by Romas.
Any other comments or questions, discussion? All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you. Item number eight this evening is the planning and zoning items. Item number eight A is the final plat of the Sheedy Farms Fourth Edition. Zoning administrative dunks, if you would.
Thank you. We are looking at a 45-plus acre parcel here. The preliminary plat was approved back in April of '25. The final plat does propose 28 buildable lots with three outlots. Outlot one would be for the stormwater infiltration area. Outlots two and three are for future development for the property to the east, which was part of that preliminary plat. Stormwater has been discussed at Public Works and Utility. We are apparently required to accept the infiltration basin. When it came through our preliminary plat, we had asked for a wet pond, but apparently our soils meet the requirements for DNR. So DNR says if the soils meet conditions, you must use infiltration. So that's why we're seeing the infiltration. Driveway access to Anston Road is restricted for two of the three lots east of Harold's Way. We did request that all three lots have that restriction. It looks like they modified that. You have an update? You have an updated plat in front of you this evening. We received that this morning. Outlot one was modified. It originally went all the way north up to Anston Road. That portion has now been turned into an easement rather than part of the outlot. It went from 90 feet wide down to 60 feet wide. We had some concerns with that, providing proper access. We did receive the engineering on that. The crossover pipe on Anston Road is the far east of that proposed easement, which should give us adequate space to get that driveway west of that crossover pipe. But with Andy being out today, we haven't been able to review it with Public Works, so that'll be an additional condition if you choose to accept the plat as it's shown to you this evening with the modifications in front of you. The final plat does appear to be substantially compliant with the preliminary plat. Thus, we, unless we have a good reason, we're required to accept this. The area is not served by public sewer or water, and there are no plans to consider it in the near future. All lots do appear to meet code requirements. A developers agreement would be needed for road and stormwater construction, administrative fees of $200 per lot at signing of the final plat. The notes on page two do indicate lots 54 through 71 will access an existing cluster box unit for mail service. Lots 44 through 53, which front on West Line Road, they have received permission to do standard mailboxes. I think they're still going to require to put three or four of them on one poster system, but they did receive permission from the USPS to group those together rather than putting in another cluster box, again, likely in two locations, but those would be placed within the right of way and do not require that cluster box unit dedication off of the actual right of way. Staff is also requesting an additional note related to stormwater easements. All stormwater easements shall remain at the elevations established at construction of the stormwater system per the approved plan. Easements shall not be disturbed during construction of any lot improvements or used for storage of any excavation materials. No structures, play areas, fire pits and such shall be placed within the easement. And then we would also like the septic system shown on the plat. We had three of them this spring that the septic system showed up within our drainage easements and created some difficulties for people. House plans were actually flipped to accommodate where the septic system was, and then they found out later that the septic was within our easement. They weren't real happy. So we're just asking that they be shown on the plat. It's just, it's something within the process of when they take soil tests and when stormwater is completed, they don't always jive so the individual taking the soil test doesn't see a stormwater plan. And it's just a cross-reference from us, so. Planning and zoning did recommend approval with the seven conditions, approval of the stormwater plan, approval of the developers agreement, the payment of the fees, that additional note, the septic locations. Oh, and also a correction on the final plat to include restrictions to lot 67. That would be the one that was missing, the driveway access. And then meeting requirements, all our applicable ordinances, regulations and reviewing agencies. Thank you.
All right, are there questions on this for zoning administrator dunks?
Refresh my memory. Now, we requested that there only be one road onto Anston, right? Or?
Yes.
Just not all driveways? And that's, that's what you were looking for, right?
Those three lots to the east have vision concerns coming down that hill.
Yeah. And is there any reason you think Andy should look at this new one before?
He will look at it, yes. He will look at it as part of our stormwater plan.
But we can approve it first?
Well, you're still contingent upon approval of the stormwater plan.
Okay.
So the change in the easement is a change to the stormwater plan? Right, because it used to be all outlot one and now it's just an easement up to Anston?
I wouldn't say it's a change to the stormwater plan. It's just, because the stormwater plan was still going to go there, it's just how we access it.
It's just defined differently.
We access it now through an easement as opposed to land that was dedicated to the village.
Okay.
Our subdivision ordinance requires infiltration basins to be on land dedicated to the village. There's nothing in there that requires road access to that dedicated outlot. So if we get there through easements, I don't think we're in violation of our subdivision ordinance. My only concern is proper access, and Andy needs to determine that, and that'll be done through the stormwater plan. If he doesn't feel it has proper access, I don't think we approve the stormwater plan. Now we're back.
To revising this.
To revising it, or they widen that easement, it wouldn't necessarily have to come back to you if they widen that easement back out, but it's still, we still have control over it, yes.
Okay, understood.
Because it's an easement, who is responsible for maintaining that? Like before, when it was village property, the village would have been responsible, right? Is it now the landowner or the lot owner? And that only would concern me if there was a part of that that was required for the stormwater. You know, like if there's a situation where if it wasn't properly maintained, then the stormwater wouldn't properly go to the outlot one, would dam up and go back into the street? That's my only concern.
I'm not sure how we maintain, typically the property owners do keep that mow then, yes, when they can get in there.
Okay.
But we're not going in there. We're not going in there every week to mow either. There's, again, that language in there should, wouldn't allow them to do any additional grading that's going to back that up.
Correct.
And it's still an easement. If it starts to back up from debris, we have the right to go in there and clean it.
And clean it for them.
That's why we have the easement, so.
So we do have a fallback position if there is a problem? Okay.
I mean, we have other situations like that in the village with other residences where there are easements there and some other residents have filled in that easement and they've had to remove that.
Yes, there's, there's an easement between lot 65 and 64, there's an easement at the back of 63. I can't see the numbers on that other one, but there's stormwater easements along property lines in numerous locations and numerous plats. And if they're not maintained properly, we have the right to go back in and maintain them.
And that's the key.
Or require.
Not talking about a situation where someone goes in there and piles a bunch of rocks or puts the dirt, that's obvious.
Right. When it's an easement, we actually have the right to require the property owner to repair it.
And in a situation with stormwater, I mean, we dredge our ponds, we dredge our ponds for a reason, stormwater brings in debris, mud, dirt. And I don't know physically what this looks like, but we would have the power of the village to go in there and correct it if the landowner wasn't able to.
Correct.
That's what, that's the answer.
Okay, anyone else? Is there anyone here who is here to speak to this item? We'll have to make a motion to open a public hearing, but I don't see anyone. Okay, so is there a motion on this? I can offer a motion, I can offer, I would like to offer a motion to approve the final plat of the Sheedy Farms Fourth Edition on parcels SU 687, SU 3148, SU 3149, SU 3155, and SU 3156 with the following conditions, one through seven. I know that you're going to ask me to read these, aren't you? Oh, you got it. Number one, approval of the stormwater management plan. Second, approval of the developers agreement for the roads and stormwater management facilities. Item three, payment of the administrative fees of $200 per lot, a total of $5,600. Item four, a note added, all stormwater easements shall remain at the elevations established at the construction of the stormwater system per the approved plan. Easements shall not be distributed during construction of any lot improvements, disturbed rather, during construction of any lot improvements or used for storage of any excavation materials. No structures, play areas, fire pits and such shall be in place within the easement. Important note. Number five, show the approved septic locations on the plat. Number six, correct the final plat to include restrictions to Anston Road for lot 67 on the final plat. And item number seven, meet the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations and reviewing agencies. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second from trustee Andrews. Would you like to reread through those, trustee Andrews? Never mind. We've got a motion that has been made and there is a question, what order?
We need to include the stormwater review by Public Works that you described earlier about Andy taking a look at this.
Number one addresses it?
That's approval of the stormwater management plan, your first, okay, all right, your first.
Yep. Item number one, approval of the stormwater management plan contingent on the, the motion contingent on. So we have a motion which I have proffered, and that has been seconded by trustee Andrews. Any last minute questions, discussion? Very well, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Okay. Item nine A, resolution 25017, amending the fee schedule. This evening, we're going to hear from clerk Bartletti.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Swamaco Cemetery Committee meant to make a recommendation to the village board regarding amending the 2025 fee schedule. The cemetery committee, cemetery director and village staff recommended maximizing the sales of plots by creating cremation plots. This would allow the sale of plots that wouldn't accommodate a full body burial. There are 51 plots identified by staff and labeled in yellow on the attached map. The recommendation is for up to two cremains per cremation plot and one small monument that would fit within the defined plot. The recommended fee is 50% of the regular price of the plots, so 600 for a non-resident cremation plot and 300 for a resident. The other recommendation is for a $50 per hour fee with a minimum of $50 to recreate the right to burial, which is the deed document. And if someone is unable to locate their original documents, they'd be able to get them recreated for that $50 per hour minimum fee. Fiscal impact is typically if people know there is a full-sized plot, they're going to spend that money and are willing to purchase the one that has a full capacity versus the smaller plots that will not allow a purchaser to enjoy the full freedom of a full body burial and then up to three additional cremains on the top. Thus, these smaller lots remain unsold and unused. This amendment would give someone an opportunity to purchase a plot at 50% off the full price if they only needed space for the two cremains. So if you could please consider resolution 25017, that would amend the 2025 fee schedule to allow for those cremation plots and the fee to recreate the right to burial deed documents.
When the cemetery ordinance first came around, there were some problems where they didn't comply with the state. Would this comply with all state?
As far as the type of burial or the?
Anything, I mean, so basically, these were spots that didn't accommodate like a full.
A full body.
But they identified these. Is there any restriction that the state would have that would not allow this?
I'm unaware of any restriction that you would have as a village board to approve those price points for us to be able to sell those smaller plots and accommodate just a two cremains on the one smaller plot. I'm unaware of any law or statute that would be in conflict.
You appear unsettled, trustee Eckert.
Well, there was an ordinance brought forth at first, and then it didn't comply with a lot of things. I just want to make sure we've, yeah.
Done with all our eyes.
And the plating of this, for the GIS system, kind of came after the ordinance. So we identified these after we put the ordinance forth. Otherwise, we would have, you know, put it forth with the ordinance. But it was kind of an after, we identified them in yellow and realized that they could not accommodate a full body burial. And with that, it really was the GIS system that allowed us to see that.
Okay.
So we had an ordinance that needed to be corrected. The ordinance was corrected. At the time of the correction, we weren't aware of these additional small lots that could be used for the cremation remains. So now we have added this rather than adding it to the ordinance itself.
In order, in order for us to be able to sell these lots or plots to someone who's just wanting cremains there, we need to have that in the fee schedule in order to be able to sell it at that price point. If we, if we don't change it, the price point, they would just get a regular plot that they could.
Yeah, why would they buy the smaller piece rather than a bigger piece?
Right, that's kind of how the cemetery committee felt.
And it's fine for us to do that.
It is fine for us to do that. The village board sets the price.
Okay.
I mean, this is just additional diversification of housing, in my opinion, so.
Yeah.
Long-term housing. But I think it makes, I think it makes good sense.
We try to make it make good sense.
Any others?
I'd be happy to offer.
Please do.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number 25017, revising the fee schedule for village cemetery fees.
So we have a motion on the floor from trustee Romas to recommend resolution 25017, amending the 2025 fee schedule to allow for cremation plots and the fee to recreate the right to burial deed documents. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from trustee Andrews this evening. Any last minute questions or discussion on this item? All right, we'll need a roll call, please.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee McKeefrey.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Romas.
Aye.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
President Venrazza.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, one and all. All right, item nine B this evening is an amendment to RC Moore's Development Agreement. And minister Kager?
Thank you. So at the request of Michael Brant, AKA MBA Holdings LLC, AKA RC Mooers, we have drafted an amendment to the existing development agreement to specify that annual payments be made out to Michael Brant instead of MBA Holdings LLC. This allows for Michael to retain the incentive payments even if he sells in interest in MBA Holdings. He was here a few months ago to talk about this concept, and we're just finally executing it. Any questions on that?
Anyone? Okay, when anyone, we need a motion to accept this amendment.
I'll make a motion to approve the first amendment to the Village of Swamaco Tax Incremental District Number One Developer Agreement and MBA Holdings LLC.
We got a motion on the floor from trustee Andrews to approve the amendment to the RC Mooers Development Agreement. It's stated, is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second down on the end from trustee Stevens. Any further questions, discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries seven to zero. All right, item nine C is the Village of Swamaco podcast. And mr. Kager?
Thank you. So a couple of months ago, the village board directed staff to draft a pilot podcast episode, and after the board would hear it, they can make a decision on whether or not to pursue this as an ongoing communication tool. I did send you all a draft pilot episode a couple of weeks ago, and I'm open to feedback and if this is something the village board wants to pursue as a weekly, monthly, bimonthly type of communication tool.
I would just like to say, I watched that podcast and I thought it was a very educational, very educational.
Thank you.
You guys did a great job, especially for your pilot one. Wow, well done. I'm not sure, you guys didn't be able to find 12 things to talk about on a monthly basis? basis.
Well, it's not going to be, it's not going to be the same cast all the time. You guys are going to get called upon.
My only concern is it going to become, and I realize this is speculation. Who knows? Right? But I know like with newsletters and things like that, you've done a great job of keeping that newsletter up. Is this going to become something that's just difficult to do and then it becomes every other month? And, you know, that, that's my only concern about it. And it's a, I understand it's a speculative concern, so I'm, it's not holding me back from saying let's go. Just, I want to hear your feedback.
It could happen.
I want to hear you, your feelings on it. Do you guys feel like this is something that will truly happen every month?
I don't feel like it's speculative. Your comments are speculative at all. I mean, I think they're true to the point that here's, here's, here's where we're at with this. We can do a podcast or we cannot do a podcast. If we choose not to do a podcast, we don't know who's watching, who's not watching. If we do do a podcast, now we've tried another methodology to reach out to community members to provide information to community members. There's a thing called analytics. We'll be able to look at the analytics and we'll be able to see how many people are viewing the podcast, who's listening, what are their comments, is there benefit to it? You know, then it just becomes a, a cost benefit, you know, analysis to determine, do we move on? The other important thing about this is, this gives an opportunity for exposure for anyone on the village board who feels strongly about an item, in particular, village staff, you know, to participate and provide these comments and information and invite guests from the community. So yeah, I think, I don't think your comments are speculative at all. I think it's.
My only concern about a podcast, you guys, I felt, did a very good job sticking to the facts, talking, you know, there may have been, who knows, right? But it seemed very factual to me. I wouldn't want this to become something where like I've got an axe to grind, so I'm going to do a podcast, right? I, I wouldn't want it to ever become that. So that's why I'm just, the monthly thing, it's only $70 a month investment, which is not a lot of money. And I'm assuming that can be used for other things too, the village maybe? No?
Yeah.
No? Okay. All right. So I'm, I'm good for continuing as a trial personally. I do think we just have to be careful on keeping it the way you guys did it, which was, I felt very factual and very objective, stayed to the point, so.
I think, I think you guys did a good job. There were a couple of things that I told Alex about that weren't quite, that there was a sewer and water difference there that wasn't quite correct, but it, it was pretty good. Overall, though, the podcast thing, I'm not in agreement with because I think it's going to become a campaigning tool for board members and it absolutely cannot become that. And I, I just, I think there's too much risk for that. So I can't be for it.
Well, I think it's important, I think it's important to point out that this isn't, board members aren't regular guests on this. This is, you know, if we're going to move forward with this, this really goes to the village administrator and for the village administrator to come forward and say, you know, put out a podcast with a topic, we all get to view it. You know, you, trustee Eckert from Department of Public Works, given your experience there, you might be called upon by the village administrator to, you know, participate in that podcast should you, should you, you know, if, if you wanted to. So that's an opportunity. It could be somebody from Park and Rec if it was Mr. Andrews, trustee Andrews, Historical Society, anyone, right? So a board member could be called as a guest, but in no way is it going to be, it falls on the administrator who's responsible to each one of us on the board. We are seven supervising authorities for the village administrator. So I think with that capacity or in that capacity, that's how we can assure that it doesn't become an opportunity for a single board member to grind an axe, as, as it was stated.
Well, but technically, well, we supervise him and he sees us campaigning. What's he going to, are you really want to put him in a spot where he has to say, no, that's, you're campaigning here, can't be doing that? I mean, there's, there's just too much possibility for that.
There's a slippery slope here, right?
Yeah.
Certainly is a slippery slope.
Darn right it is.
The other side of that too is, we've said many times up here that an individual board member's opinion is their opinion and not the opinion of the board. So that's another thing where we have to be very careful with a podcast like this, that I don't present my opinion as a member and it looks like it's the opinion of the board. So like I said, like I said, I'm okay with it continuing because the way you guys did it, I thought was really well, but we just have to be really, really careful that this doesn't become, doesn't go down that slippery slope.
So how do we?
Ridiculously.
Get everybody comfortable that this isn't a, a campaigning conduit? I guess I'm, I'm a little bit troubled by that comment because this is intended to understand what the community is in search of. We use the example of an investment we're making in the community and we're giving them facts so there's not stories being told. So I guess I would be very supportive of this panel of people or anybody else that would make suggestions of topics so that we can eliminate this concern about that somehow this is going to be a vehicle for somebody to campaign their opinions. I, I, I would be very disappointed if that's ever were to happen and we can filter anything that leaves on the podcast to make everybody comfortable. Boy, I'll tell you, I, I would be shocked that we would think anybody on this board would use as a vehicle.
It's reality. It happens every day.
And it can be inadvertent.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be like I'm out there campaigning.
Absolutely.
It can just be like I have an opinion on something and I just say my opinion or maybe the facts I know are the facts I know and I emphasize those facts, not because I'm trying to trick anybody or hide anything, but just because those are the facts I know.
So, so.
I'm just, I'm just adding, we just need to be careful.
Of course.
And if we start seeing it going down that path, we need to be prepared to just stop it or fix it.
So.
Yeah, I, I guess that, I'm, I'm, okay, I'm, I'm right there with you. How would you like to go through the approval process of every podcast?
So what I'm saying is that we, so my position on it is I like the podcast and we should, we should continue it. We just need to be, as a board, on our toes and watch it.
Of course.
So that it doesn't become, that's, that's what I've been saying.
A hundred percent agreed. I just, I don't think, I don't think you try to fix a problem that hasn't occurred at this point in, in lieu of, so, so do we, do we say no to the podcast and say, no, you know, as a method of communicating, which is a recognized method of communicating with many individuals, we don't do this at the risk of? Or do we move forward with this? And in terms of approval, I put that on, and Minister Kager is responsible to each one of us up here on this board, as is the staff. Partisan, this is a nonpartisan, supposed to be a nonpartisan board. This, I, I leave this to Minister Kager and his guests, who he should have. If there are suggestions that anyone has in this group, I think you provide them to Minister Kager. I, my suggestion after this was, let's do an educational piece on the comprehensive plan so people understand what the comprehensive plan is and maybe we get more input. That's, was one suggestion, but maybe there's other suggestions. I just think, to your point, trustee Romas, and a point well made, if we start to see these podcasts and we start to feel as a majority of the board that these podcasts are taking a specific perspective rather than just being factual, then we end the podcast.
We see it coming and as, and a majority of the board, so what makes it wrong or right is the board's majority? I, I mean, it's.
I understand what you're saying. Help, help me to understand what you, what you're pointing at.
You're saying as, if we see it as the majority of the board sees it, then we'll put a stop to it. I mean, what if five people had a political opinion or four people had a political opinion? The majority of the board had a political opinion and because it's a majority, it would be okay?
I, I, I don't.
I, it's just, it's not a good idea. I'm not going for it.
Okay.
If you want to make a podcast, you should do that on your own.
Brown County just did a podcast.
Good for Brown County.
Well, my point being, my point being, this isn't just some new fangled thing that just popped out of the blue that we're doing. This is a recognized methodology of communication. And, and you can certainly have your opinion, as anyone can, that this, you know, that we don't need this and maybe the analytics will tell us we don't. Trustee Andrews.
I think if we all make our best effort to keep it to factual and not opinionated, that I think it should go good. And that will be with Administrator Kager to make sure we try to stay on board with that, you know?
So what if we were to, I, I like the idea of the podcast. I thought it was fantastic. To trustee Eckert and Romi's concerns, whenever we're bringing communication out more to the public, it opens up the door for the potential of what they're talking about. So I do understand. I don't think we should not do it because I don't think that people are reading the newsletter. I don't think that people are, we've got a good audience, but we could have a greater audience to our board meetings. If we were to entrust Administrator Kager to manage this to ensure that the public, the podcast subject matter is based upon, is geared towards whatever was being discussed maybe at the previous board meeting or, you know, some item on that, the, on, on the agenda from the previous board meeting and that the driving force would be the department head of that particular subject matter and the trustee that would be participating in it would be basically offering that communication just as well as could be replaced by a member, a business leader or another member of the community that is from that subject matter expert area. I think if we were to keep that in, in our sights and entrust that it stays factual and not political, to Administrator Kager, I think we should give it a shot. I think with the comprehensive planning coming up in 2026, there's going to be a lot of residents that are going to be looking for any possible way to gain more understanding of this process and what we're doing and what's, what advantages are going to be coming forth. I myself learned a lot from the water tower project that I wasn't here for, I wasn't on the board, and I learned a lot more just from that short pilot that you, that you all put together. So maybe because that pilot was just to board members as well, so that may have put a bad taste as well. I don't know. I'm, I'm, I understand the point, is what I'm trying to say. But I think that if we were just to empower Administrator Kager to manage that and as a board, maybe we review it. You know, we watch the podcast and we monitor it and we can always bring it up as a future agenda item. If it's something that we feel, if a board member feels it needs to be addressed and we can discuss it further at that time.
It would be the majority of the board.
That is how it works, yes. But if it is a problem and it's a considered problem by other members of the board, it would work in your favor.
And you get one member as well that would speak for the whole board and I don't like that either. I, I'm not the best speaker in the world, but I do speak for myself.
I don't, I don't think that it should be construed that the person who is a guest as a trustee on the podcast would be speaking for the entire board. I would agree with that.
You're saying that it should not be permitted or, I mean, when they're talking, I'm just, I'm just looking for clarification, I'm sorry, this is not a, when you said that, did you mean that it shouldn't be construed by the public that the person from the board who's speaking is not speaking for the entire board? Or are you saying that when that person is speaking, that they should not speak for the entire board?
They're, first, both.
Okay.
So they should not be speaking for the whole board and they should also not be sharing opinions.
Right, so the public should see that as, as factual, not an opinion.
Correct.
Okay, I got you now.
Right.
So trustee Eckert, you'd mentioned that there may be a couple of actual factual problems potentially.
Well, there were, there were some small issues, like I think it was the, well, the sewer debt for one thing. And, and I don't know, I, I had them written down at a point and I texted them to Alex.
So when there's a factual issue like that.
There's, there's a few facts that could have been tweaked a little.
There should be some way to.
They weren't entirely correct.
Like maybe the thing to do is have a preview by the board members of it before it goes out. And if there are factual changes, then that could be placed like over the podcast. I've seen that plenty of times where you watch someone doing a video podcast and it'll be like, I meant to say this or that, you know, you know what I'm talking about? You see, it's like, it's written up there. I, I was just trying to figure out a way because the fact of the matter is you've got three people on this one and they're talking and they're going from memory, some, you know, that's what, there's going to be factual errors because you're human, right? And we should have a, we should have a mechanism to correct those before it goes out to the public. Because once it's to the public, then they're going to see the first thing and the public is going to take that and they're going to be educated by that. They're not going to go back a month later and review it to try to find any factual.
I think we would rely upon Alex to, to make sure that that's true.
Is that fair to Alex?
That's, yeah, that's something that I can easily do. And in the moment, remember, this was just a pilot draft. I wasn't stopping us anytime there was something slightly incorrect.
Okay.
If that happens in the real recording, that can be something where we pause a recording, we re-ask the question and I can splice it in a way that it, it erases the incorrect answer, replaces it with the correct answer. Or if we find out later that there wasn't an accuracy, that is something that I can do is put over the top of the image, you know, actually, this state statute 66.5, not 66.4.
Right.
You know, those are things that I can do with the editing software that we have.
And would you feel comfortable with the idea of presenting the unreleased podcast to every member on the board like you did on this with this last one for review and response before it's issued to the public?
If that's what the board directs, sure.
I'm not in favor of that at all. Now you've just, now you've just put in so much, so many layers of your accuracy.
But.
If you're, if you're concerned, if, if the conspiratorial fears.
No, don't go there.
Well, this is what we're talking about.
No, it isn't. We're talking about.
No, you're jumping on.
Nope.
A number of, a number of comments have been made that have talked about the politicization of a podcast, for goodness sake.
What I'm talking about is factual now. So what it gives an opportunity is for the board to respond to it prior to it being released so you don't have the problem of something coming to a board meeting and saying it happened after it's been released to the public.
We have.
It's not a conspiracy, it's not that, it's a second set of eyes.
No way in hell is that a conspiracy.
I wasn't saying that that was a conspiracy, trustee Eckert, but you have been the prefer, proffer of many conspiracy theory over this. This is, this is not a conspiracy. Here's how I would eliminate any issues, any concerns with, with the politicization of this. Guess what? No trustees. So Alex, you do the podcast, you bring in the special guests, it can be anybody from any committee, but no trustees. Done. So then the trustees don't get to participate. We're going to stick to the information. If there is something that comes out, if the podcast comes out and there's misinformation in there, well, we have someone who is responsible for that. That's our village administrator and we will make the apologies, necessary, but take the, take the trustees out entirely.
Okay, no trustees. I can go for that.
Fine with me.
So I think it's, and, and again, then it comes back to, we look at the analytics and if it doesn't, if it's not reaching people, there's no sense in doing it.
Well, let's talk about the analytics then. This podcast needs to be promoted. Nobody, it's what people don't know they don't know, just like the newsletters. And so we have to get comfortable that we're going to have discussions around how would we like to allow and educate people that this is available. Today, we have mailboxes that are outside our doors. We have email addresses that many of the citizens have provided to us during the voting rights. So we have to have a conversation around the mechanics of building the podcast, but how would you like to get comfortable with allowing and educating people this exists? Because the first, first six months of this, there'll be conversations, we're wasting our time. I've been through this process many times and it will take many, many reps to have it be successful. So there, there are techniques and again, everybody has, there are many email addresses we're in, we have today. Are we comfortable in just letting people know, hey, we've put podcasts out there and here's a link? And people can just touch it and rather than fishing through a website to find.
I'm comfortable doing that.
What's it?
I'm comfortable doing that.
I don't.
I am, but some people are offended by it.
I don't think we're allowed to do that.
You're not allowed to do that.
I think there's something with the federal Communications Authority or whatever they're called.
The feds?
You can't, you can't.
You can't educate people.
Email addresses and send them whatever you want. You can't do that. So for our email newsletter, you have to request to, you have got to request in to receive.
Okay, that's fine.
We can't just do that on our own.
You can't go out and...
We can't do that on our own.
You have to subscribe.
So, where would we publish this podcast if we were to move forward?
On the website.
Well, we'd use our other standard communication tools. That's our website. That's our e-newsletter that has already 1,100 people who subscribe to it. So, it'd be on the top of each newsletter. So, you already have a base of 1,100 people that would see it. Facebook, Twitter.
So, we could put it out on social media?
Oh, of course. Yep.
And there's also nothing stopping you from sending an email to a friend. You're talking about people that sign...
Correct. As an organization, I can't just grab emails randomly and send you emails.
Right. Okay.
And Facebook's a great idea.
Other items? Anybody else have other items on this?
I think it's a great tool to reach out to more people within our community as we, Trustee Romas, one, for sure, was always about...
Oh, for sure. I think it's great.
You know, other ways to reach out to the community. And I think, Trustee Eckert, I think you were always kind of with that too, to get other people involved, you know? So, it's a great tool to use yet.
I'm okay with it if there's no trustees.
Okay, so, just to, I'll, let me see if I can offer a motion. I would offer a motion to approve moving forward with the Village of Swamaco podcast with a couple of conditions. The first condition is that there are no trustees who are guests on that podcast.
No elected officials.
Better yet. No elected officials, so that's going to mean we can't get anybody from Brown County, no elected officials. Okay.
Well, I guess it's up to you. You're doing the motion.
No, we'll take it. We'll take it. So, the podcast, moving forward with the podcast with the condition that there are no elected officials, that podcast and determination of topics can be suggested from trustees to the village administrator. Village administrator makes the final decision on the podcast content and guests. Yes?
Yeah.
That's the motion? Somebody second that?
Second.
Second from Trustee McKeefry. Okay. Let's do a roll call because it's the final one of the night.
Okay. Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee McKeefry.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Romas.
Aye.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
President Vinrazza.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously seven to zero.
And it is, it is the CAN SPAM Act, if you want to learn more about how we can...
The what?
The CAN SPAM Act.
But then, we're still free to put it on Facebook and email our friends. We just can't like block email.
Item number 10 this evening, any discussion on future agenda items? Anybody got any? No? How about, how about a motion to adjourn the evening's meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Trustee Stevens has offered a motion to adjourn the evening's meeting. That has been seconded by Trustee Romas. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, this meeting is adjourned seven to zero. Thank you, everybody.